Recording in progress.
Good evening. Welcome to the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for April 25th, Monday, April 25th. If I could get everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Hayes, would you lead us?
Ready? Begin.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation among God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Planner, can you please do rule call?
Chairman Rosales.
President.
Commissioner Balma.
Here.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
Commissioner Simons.
Here.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
President.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Record show that all members are present.
Great, thank you. City Planner, I think you wanted to make a couple of clarifications on tonight's agenda.
Yes, thank you Chairman Rosales. Under the discussion items, we have two items that need some clarification. Item number five is actually being continued to the meeting of May 23rd, not May 9th. So just making, clarifying that that should have read the 23rd, not the 9th. And under item number seven, we failed to post the staff report resolution for this item, and we didn't deliver it to the Planning Commission. So we're going to continue that item to the meeting of May 9th. So those two items are what need to be clarified. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Moving along then. Any, City Planner, any items, tonight's communications on matters not on the agenda, any slips to speak on any item?
Chairman Rosales, we do have two slips for items not on the agenda.
Great. We'll take them one at a time, if you want to read them out.
Sure. Dennis Martinick.
Good evening Commissioners. Dennis Martinick, 42-year resident of South Morro Hills, retired professor of business economics and urban planning. I'd like to call your attention to the South Morro Hills Community Plan Survey Report. And it was a well-done report. The indications on it in three areas I'd like to bring to your attention. The first one is question three. And basically, what it says is that should agriculture be maintained as the primary use in South Morro Hills. And it receives strong support. If you read the lower area, you'll see that it received even stronger, or the strongest support, from farmers and ranchers in that area. Question number four, basically goes into promoting agritourism. And agritourism, I'm going to read this because I can see that that's difficult for some people to see. But on the agritourism, there's a lot of support for it because people realize that farmers do need additional sources of income. And there's no problem in using or relying on agritourism for that objective. So again, strong support for that area. In the third one, the third question was about clustered housing. And if you look at this survey, you'll see that clustered housing was strongly opposed. People do not want clustered housing in the area. They see the conflict, they see the problems that it will cause. And in confirming those conclusions from the survey, the last Planning Commission meeting, 328, it came out that participants expressed concern about all sorts of areas: potential conflicts between residential and agricultural uses, infrastructure costs, wildfire risk, traffic, greenhouse gas emission impact, the loss of scenic resources, the loss of biological diversity, and inconsistency with other components of the general plan update that promotes smart growth and discourages sprawl. So nearly all of the 70-plus community members providing public testimony at that meeting wanted to maintain the existing zoning standard of one dwelling unit per two and a half acres, promote agritourism, and consider other approaches to farmland preservation other than clustered home. So thank you for your time. It would be wrong to support a plan that's opposed by the vast majority of Oceanside citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Martinick. We have one more speaker.
Phil Johnston.
Chairman Rosales, Planning Commission. My comments today concern the Planning Commission meeting held 28 March this year regarding the South Morro Hills Community Plan. The meeting notice indicated the meeting would be a presentation and discussion. But when the meeting occurred, an attempt was made to change the purpose of the meeting through a Planning Commission vote on recommending a preferred alternative to the city council. Attempting to change the purpose of the meeting was outside the bounds of proper governance and should not have been suggested or considered. Based on the meeting notice, I attended by Zoom, which did not allow me the opportunity to comment. Had I known a vote might take place, I would have attended in person to make comments and to increase the number of concerned citizens present. I admire the tact and politeness with which the change was discussed and considered by Chairman Rosales and the Planning Commission. And I appreciate that the right decision was made to disallow the change. However, this is a serious violation of process, which could have disenfranchised me and others from having a voice in a city planning issue of considerable importance. I hope there will be a critical review of how this change was nearly allowed to happen. And I hope that there will be a clearly written reminder circulated in the Planning Department stressing the importance of following correct procedures. Thank you again for the tactful way this complication was handled in the previous meeting. And thank you for a productive and constructive meeting overall, in which a number of key issues were raised and discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is that it?
We have one more speaker slip.
One more.
Michelle Castellano Keeler.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Castellano Keeler, and I'm a third-generation flower farmer. My family, Milano and Company, farms approximately 250 acres in South Morro Hills. We would be referred to as a commercial farmer in South Morro Hills. I want to thank this Planning Commission and the city staff for their time and efforts over the past several years looking at South Morro Hills and providing alternatives to farmers such as ourselves who are struggling. If you're new to this commission, you might not be familiar with the fact that several years ago, the large landowners who are commercial farmers such as ourselves, were getting concerned because we could no longer farm profitably. With rising water costs, labor costs, state restrictions, and offshore competition, made us all look at leaving farming. And the only alternative in South Morro Hills is to cut up our land into two and a half acre parcels with not much planning, no infrastructure, et cetera. South Morro Hills, the large landowners in the city came up with an alternative to preserve the ag region. It was looking at robust agritourism and clustering the housing instead of chopping it up into two and a half acres. We applaud the work that the city has done in this plan. The current zoning with the two and a half acre option for us does not save farmland. It chops up our farm into two and a half acre lots, and we merely go back to that sort of pegboard idea, and there's no more farming in South Morro Hills. I'm sure as planners, you can see the layers of problems that that adds to that. I know you've heard from a lot of non-farmers in surveys of people saying that if we leave South Morro Hills the way it is, farmland will be saved. Basically, do nothing and the farmland is saved. As a commercial farmer and the other farmers in that area like myself, we will tell you otherwise. Basically, farming the way it's existing right now in South Morro Hills does not have a future. You do not save farmland if you don't save the farmer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Those are all the speaker slips. Chair Rosales.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll consider a motion. You should have seen the packet of minutes from our last meeting. I'll consider a motion or some discussion for approval of those minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Morrissey. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the vote is 7-0 in favor of adopting the minutes.
Thank you. Our agenda doesn't show any items on the consent calendar nor under transportation items, so we'll go to public hearings. We have one item tonight. Item four is consideration of a development plan, coastal development permit and density bonus to construct a mixed-use development at 1931 through 1935 South Coast Highway. That's in the South Oceanside Neighborhood Planning Area. The applicant is South Coast Mercantile LLC. Disclosures, I'll start with myself. Actually drove by there. I stopped and looked today, this afternoon. Read the staff report, and I know we also got at least a couple of emails. Commissioner, Vice Chair Morrissey?
I read the staff report. Familiar with the site.
Commissioner Balma?
I also have the staff report. Very familiar with the site. I met with the applicant and received a few emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer?
Rode by the site and looked around it. Met with the applicant, read the staff report, and read the emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
Read the staff report. Very familiar with the site. Drove by it again, just to make sure. And also looked on Google Earth.
Commissioner Dodds? Thank you. And Commissioner Simons?
Staff report and the emails that were in the package.
Thank you. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening. Chairman Rosales, Planning Commissioners, members of the public, I'm Scott Nightingale, here to present agenda item number four. To construct a mixed-use density bonus development with 18 residential apartment units, and two of those being dedicated for very low income levels, and an attached 2,775 square foot ground floor commercial space located in approximately 0.28 acre site at 1931 South Coast Highway. Project's known as The Flats, and the applicant and their team is present today. As stated in the intro there, they are planning to demolish the three existing single-story commercial buildings totaling 5,169 square feet in order to develop a mixed-use development consisting of 18 apartment units and the ground floor commercial with a 20-space parking garage at the first level. A regular coastal permit is required and proposed for the creation of the vertical mixed-use project within the coastal zone. This project's within the non-applicable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. And also, density bonus proposal is requested to allow an increase in the density by 50% above the maximum density of one unit per square feet for maximum potential density of 12 units. Here's an image of the, just the density calculations on how we came about with the proposed density bonus calculation. So the site being 2.8 acres, and the density within this area is 1 per 1,000, or 43 dwelling units per acre, which comes out to 11.9. For the density bonus law, you're allowed to round up, which is why we have the 12 units. So with that, for the 50%, with them incorporating the very low-income units for minimum restricted affordable 15, they're granted a 50% density bonus above the base, the density calculation above. So with that, 12, as you can see in the calculation, multiplied by a half gives you six additional units for a total of 18 units. Two of these units will be affordable and will be proportional to other market rate studios. Please note that these are apartments, so they'll be rented within the market rate rentals. They'll be dispersed throughout the project, and we'll be allocated as affordable to very low-income households per state density bonus law. The two units will have access to all the other amenities as the other market rates will have. In addition to state density bonus law, state law entitles projects to certain incentives or concessions, and also provides for waivers of development standards that would physically preclude the project at the density proposed. Granting the waivers does not reduce the number of incentives, nor allow on a project. And the number of waivers that may be requested and granted is not limited. State law prohibits the city from denying any requested incentives, concessions, or waivers unless findings are made that the, that a specific adverse impact, which is defined as a means of significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective unidentified written public health or safety standard policies or conditions as they exist on the date the application was deemed complete. Just to go a little bit more further into density bonus, state law entitles projects to a specific number of incentives as stated, and concessions that allow for provisions of the affordable units to be financially feasible, and requires local jurisdictions to provide an unlimited number of waivers of the development standards. They are asking for three concessions and only two waivers. The first concession is to waive the street frontage improvements, including the half-street replacement along the public street as required by policy of the circulation element 3.18. There's actually no access that would occur off the frontage off Coast Highway as of right now. The street doesn't meet the actual width for even providing parking. It's all red curb there, so this is, we find that this is an acceptable request. They're also asking to waive the undergrounding of the overhead utilities and related in lieu fees along the public streets as required by the zoning ordinance 3023. The existing overhead utilities are located along the rear alley, and actually but the residential area's property line. So this would, asking for the waiver of the undergrounding would alleviate any impacts to the neighbor. And lastly, concession number three is to reduce the parking requirement for the commercial component of the project by five spaces based on the added cost of providing the subterranean parking, which would accommodate code-compliant parking. Lastly, the applicant has provided the reasonable documentation in the form of a project performa, which was also attached to the project description, that can be required by staff that shows the requested concessions result in identifiable and actual cost reduction to provide affordable housing costs. And the waivers, the two waivers that they're requesting, a request for relief of the 50-foot front yard setback measured from the center line of Coast Highway. A majority of the building does meet the 50-foot front yard center line requirement, but there is portions of the building that would be anywhere from 45 to 40 feet. A majority of those portions that are not meeting the 50-foot setback are the commercial frontage of the buildings, which we find actually provides more of a massing relief, provides a tiering wedding cake effect, and actually provides a, brings the commercial closer to the street and provides a better pedestrian feel. And waiver two is a waiver to request relief on the Oceanside zoning ordinance 1140 for landscaping of 60% of the required front yard. They will be requesting and requiring landscaping within the parkways. There's also shade canopy trees will be provided, potted plants, enhanced paving, so a majority of the landscaping will be provided, but they are asking for this waiver. Here's an image of the site. Property has a general plan land use designation of general commercial under the land use of the local coastal program and corresponds zoning designation of C2 general commercial. The property is within an urbanized area and surrounded by other commercial retail developments in all directions, with the exception of the multifamily and single-family homes directly to the west and to the rear of the property. Like I said earlier, the project is located in a non-applicable area of the coastal zone, and is located less than a mile south of the South Coast Highway Sprinter Station, and a little under two miles from the transit station. Here's some images of the existing site. The project site, like I said, is located on 1931 to 1935 South Coast Highway within the South Oceanside Planning Area. Project's consists of two legal parcels totaling 0.28 acres in size. Site currently exists with three single-story multi-tenant commercial buildings totaling 5,169 square feet, along with approximately 12 asphalt parking spaces at the rear. Also permitted, per these, the subject historical analysis that was prepared by Kristi Hawthorne, it was found that the structures do not meet the criteria to be classifying any historical significance. Here's an image of the site plan. Vehicle access site would occur from the rear alley, and all pedestrian access will be available both through the interior walkways, not only through the parking garage, but through the frontage along South Coast Highway. Here's an image of the conceptual landscape plan, which provides a plant palette that embraces the coastal environment by utilizing plant designs that balance and complement the site, as well as provide stormwater management requirements while enhancing the neighborhood, curb appeal, and establishing a walkable street frontage. The plan features landscaped ground cover and trees within the perimeter of the site, as well as planters along South Coast Highway. The frontage landscape provides an aesthetically pleasing buffer from the street, and the building and landscaping would assist in physically enhancing not only the site, but the neighborhood. The mixed-use building has been designed at three stories with a mezzanine above, which has been included in eight of the 10 three-story units for a total building height of 42.8, which is under the allowable 45-foot height requirement. The commercial space has design, has been designed as two individual tenant spaces with direct pedestrian access along the frontage and also through the alley and the back rear parking garage. In addition, the commercial space, first level of the building will include, cover the actual first-level parking garage, as well as trash enclosure, electrical room, entry court, two common stairwells, an elevator, resident lockers, and a mail pickup area. The second and third levels of the building will contain the 18 apartment units, common laundry storage rooms, maintenance rooms, common elevator, as well as bicycle storage and surfboard room, and private decks for each unit. The flat rooftop areas will be utilized for solar-ready conduit installations, condensers, vents, and all of the rooftop equipment. And here's an image of the mezzanines for those units as specified. And that's the roof there. A majority of the units will be studio apartments. You have six units that will be considered studios. You have additional six with lofts. So total of 12 units as studios. They have the options there with the lofts to have another bedroom. You have a residential one-bedroom, you have one of those units, as well as a one-bedroom with den. We have two of those, as well as one-bedroom with loft. And as you can see, the last one there, one-two-bedroom unit. Here's an image of the elevations. The contemporary architecture design draws from many of the eclectic and recently developed infill projects within the city. The well-articulated three-story structure would create an attractive scale, pattern, and complement the existing, the existing area as well as the neighborhood, and any anticipated future development along the street frontage. The elevations are detailed with numerous pop-outs, balconies, and differences in material. The use of varying colors and textures on elevations to create a unique design complement the architecture. The design also provides the commercial uses along South Coast Highway to enable a neighborhood serving retail use while providing outdoor areas to welcome the public at the lower levels. The residential units located on the second and third floor are stepped back from the street to allow for a terrace massing effect to reduce the massing along Coast Highway. While the zoning ordinance allows for four stories at 45 feet in height, the applicant is proposing a three-story building at 42.8 feet in height. Along the Coast Highway frontage, the single-story commercial volumes are accentuated with a 20-foot setback to the second floor and a 28-foot setback to the third floor. Like I said earlier, it gives kind of that wedding tier effect to reduce the massing. The applicant has worked with staff to provide an architectural design that complements the neighborhood as well as the site. Also to note, there's not, they haven't included all of the proposed landscaping, so there will be additional low-line shrubs and also some shade canopy trees, which will help soften the look of the building from the street view. Here's an image of the zoning conformance table. The project, as shown in the table, pretty much meets all of the zoning standards, with the exception of the waivers, the waiver for the front yard setback, also the landscaping waiver, and the concession for the parking. The mixed-use residential parking requirement of one space per unit was utilized to calculate the parking requirement for the residential component, which is 18 spaces. The zoning ordinance permits a 25% reduction of commercial spaces which they are utilizing. As you can see in this table here, so you have the 18 required spaces for the residential, the commercial, which was analyzed per the zoning ordinance at one space per 300 requires nine spaces. When utilizing Section 1140Q for the 25% reduction, that gives approximately seven spaces as required. They are providing two. So they are underparked by five spaces, which they are asking for the concession there. They do have a reciprocal parking agreement, which will be included to allow the residents and visitors to utilize those two commercial spaces during non-business hours. And also, two of the commercial spaces will result in the deficit as specified. But staff has reviewed their parking analysis and found that based on their concession, their waiver, that is, it is allowed. In addition to that, they are providing one EV space with three spaces reserved for EV as well, which is compliant with the city's climate action plan and the zoning ordinance. The applicant has held a community meeting via Zoom on March 10, 2020, where there was approximately 20 to 25 members that participated in this meeting. Based on the comments received from the meeting, the project density was reduced down from 20 units to 18 units, which also provided for more parking opportunities. Some of the participants raised issues regarding the architectural design, which we worked with the applicant on softening the look. Also, neighbors were really concerned with the bulk and scale, and just the parking reductions, as well as the density proposed. And we've also received a few emails in support, which I have emailed to you earlier this weekend, as well as today. So with that, staff reviewed the project based on the following: general plan land use compliance. This project achieves a balance of residential and commercial land use, which is consistent with the general plan's goals and policies for establishing more housing, provides a good transition between existing medium density and the single-family, and also commercial within this area. The proposed project would assist in meeting the project's housing demand. The project applicant intends to provide affordable units, which is specified, and is highly recommended in inclusionary housing ordinance. And lastly, as condition, the project meets the required findings for development compatibility with the development standard, with the exceptions of the setback waivers and the landscape waivers as well. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission by motion firm issuance of the CEQA exemption for infill development and adopt a resolution 2022 B09 approving the development plan, coastal permit, and density bonus. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for that presentation. I had a couple questions or comments. So when I initially read through this and looked at the waiver and the waiver information, I was a little concerned about the landscaping issue. And then I went by the site and I saw how little landscaping there is. So by the depiction you had up on the presentation, it looks like the landscaping will actually be improved from what it is today. I don't know if you want to pull that slide back up, but if that's what it ends up looking like, I think that's a better end result. And I could support the waiver, because like I said, yeah, right now it's pretty sparse. So that was one comment. The other was the ingress and egress from the site. I think in one slide you showed it, it's in, really in the alley in the back, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I think that's all I had. Any other questions for staff? Go ahead. Go ahead. Commissioner Obama?
I noticed, uh, in the slide that there's, it's a red curb in front of this, uh, project. There's no parking, there's no street parking, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And why is that? Is it because of the turning, like the gas stations there, that it's a turn pocket? Or is the street narrow there?
The street is too narrow to fit, to actually fit any, any parking in that area. Uh, one of the reasons why is because of the left-hand turn pocket that's coming up there. It just kind of bottlenecked at this area as well, so unfortunately we can't acquire any or ask for any street parking. It doesn't fit.
Curious, uh, you said there was a community meeting. When I visited this afternoon, I actually got gas at the gas station and they're right there. Do you know in that community outreach effort if, uh, there was any feedback from the gas station owner and how that might impact their business?
I, from, I also attended the, the community meeting. I didn't hear anything from the, from that adjoining neighbor there. If they were, they, they didn't, they didn't make themselves know.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, yeah, go ahead. If you could turn on your, your mic, yeah, there you go.
There we go, sorry. Part of the waivers, we're asking to, um, eliminate five parking spaces, um, from the commercial side. Has there been a study as far as what kind of problems that may cause in the future?
Commissioner Dodd, uh, believe they're asking, yes, they're asking for the concession of the reduction in parking, concession three, um, to not require additional, or five spaces. But they're required seven, they're only providing two. They did provide a parking analysis, which showed that there was a, there was an influx of on-street parking in, in walking proximity of this area. And being a density bonus project, they are entitled to, uh, concessions and waivers for certain development standards, which they are asking for.
Is there a distance requirement? Cause, uh, cause we can see that there's a red zone parking right in front, so there's no parking in front. So we're talking about, so how far away is there, will, will there be, um, provided, a parking provided?
There's, there's no specified distance for off-site parking, no.
Okay.
Great. Um, Commissioner Obama, did you have another question?
No, that was my question.
Okay. Great. I think we're done for the moment, Scott. So I believe you indicated the representative, applicant's representative was here this evening. I don't know if they want to do a presentation. Or just come forward and be available for questions.
Sorry, I didn't prepare a presentation. Didn't want to show up, show up, Scott. Uh, my name is Brendan, I'm, uh, founding principal of Fabric Investments. This is, um, one of our projects and, and we feel grateful to be working in Oceanside, um, our local North County boutique group based in Carlsbad Village. 90% of our work is Oceanside, Carlsbad Village. We try to focus on creating neighborhood-enhancing projects. And with this one, you know, a lot of our, um, a lot of the intent was kind of stemmed in the Coast Highway Vision Plan and, and what that set out to accomplish, which we believe in, um, which is creating kind of sustainable infill, creating housing for a lot of different, um, and people in the population that want to live in the area. Um, we felt like there was a lack of kind of workforce for rent housing in South O. Um, and we, we hope that this somewhat addresses it. I know that only two of our units are deemed, uh, affordable for very low income, but when you look at our unit mix and the actual rents that we're looking at, you know, compared to the market, we, we see almost all of our units as being actually affordable, um, which means that, you know, the workforce that lives and wants to live, work, and play in that community has the opportunity to do so. We put a lot of focus on the commercial spaces as well. Renderings maybe don't always do justice, but, um, just to comment on, uh, a couple of the, the things that got brought up on landscaping, where if you, if you were familiar with some of our other projects, um, we definitely won't go short on landscaping. So beyond what's just coming out of the ground, uh, we'll be having a lot of potted plants and different things, because that's just important to us. We want this to be a very welcoming, kind of warm place for the public to gather, um, which is kind of why we created this little zone to meander through, which almost emulates a pocket park. The two commercial spaces, we think can be great dynamic, um, fits for small business owners in the community. Um, and we put a lot of focus on the design, which is why, although our height limit is 45 feet and we pushed it to 42, but only three stories, it's because we gave a lot of height commercial, which we think is important. Uh, that's a lot of underestimated, um, importance on the height of the, of a retail space. And a lot of times in a four-story, it could just get sandwiched down, down, down. You've got an eight-foot-high, pretty unappealing rectangle. Um, so I think you'll find that, you know, these spaces are really inviting and really, um, great places for new small businesses to open up or existing ones to expand. Outdoor space, we live in a beautiful part of the country. Um, that's why we created an outdoor patio for every single unit. Um, so that was important to us and, and that lended really well to the terrorist approach, where we were able to get sunlight into all angles of this building. You know, the current uses right now are retail and with only 12 parking spaces and about 5,500 feet of building, uh, and a lot of different kind of populated retail spaces. We actually think we're probably reducing the traffic intensity, as silly as it may sound, you know, given the density of this project. But going from 12 spaces to 20 and primarily having one resident, uh, dwelling units, we actually think that it, it won't have as big of an impact as maybe you'll think. However, we, we have, we will probably have about 100 parking spaces within a one-block radius between our projects here. So although we're not, you know, conditioned to do anything, uh, we will be trying to help alleviate that concern as much as we can, which may include, um, working with some of our commercial tenants to have their employees park at one of our other projects during off-hours, things like that. So we want to be good stewards to the neighborhood, we want to be creative, uh, we want to be working in this area for a long time, and part of that is, you know, getting the neighbors to trust that you're going to make good decisions. So that's important to us and, and hopefully it starts with the design and the intent and, and that's aligned with the vision plan, which I think we all want to see fulfilled. In terms of like parking in front of the building, we would love that too, um, but that would obviously require us shrinking it down to, to just two lanes. And that doesn't seem to be getting as much positive support currently. We did talk to the gas station owner, uh, over the phone, just to let, make them aware of our project and, um, I'm not sure if I talked to the owner of the gas station or the owner of the property, but he was a very older man and he was just very excited. He said he was happy to see something happening and thought that it would equate to more business, you know, maybe from purchasing snacks and things like that, which, you know, we hope if we can bring 18 new residents to this area, that is, that's a little lift for all the local businesses around there. If you have any other questions? It's technical too, uh, we have our architect, Scott Moss, here as well.
Yeah, I have a, a comment and, and maybe a question. Thanks for mentioning the Coast Highway Vision Plan. I think, uh, this would represent the first project so far south. And, um, yeah, I think it, it captures that vision of that plan, which we adopted here so many years ago. The other thing I like, if, if the design holds, uh, as we see in this depiction here, that I like, which I learned, uh, and I use this word all the time now, it's annoying to my wife or my architecture friends, is the articulation of the project here and the way the things set back and so forth. It's, it's very, it's very attractive and I think it'll enhance the, uh, the neighborhood quite well. So, um, I had one other thought, but I've forgotten it. So I see Commissioner Obama, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to speak to, uh, this company's kind of like background that you might want to consider as far as other projects. I know you didn't mention it yourselves, but I think it speaks to the quality and what they bring to Oceanside. They have several projects, when I met with them, that they are currently building, uh, the Collective, which is the Brixton, uh, the coffee place, Brixton. There's a bunch of little things where they repurpose the building, and that's like a very phenomenal project that they did. Um, they are also doing across the street, the Red and White Market, the Medical Supply, and the Kona Hut, which is all kind of following that same kind of like, um, high, just kind of repurposing and doing a great job with addressing the neighborhood concerns. So right across the street, that was a project, he mentioned it possibly, they could do an extra parking, maybe reciprocal parking thing that can, might come out of that. But the other thing was, was, was also impressive was Lofty Coffee in Carlsbad, which is kind of like what this building kind of mimics a little bit. I don't know if you guys have been to that, but it's a great design also. I'm not sure if it's the same architect that did that building, but another great design, um, in Carlsbad, and this one's kind of looks like it follows suit. So just to show the reputation these guys have, he didn't really toot his horn hard, uh, loud enough, I don't think, but he's, um, they're coming from a really kind of neighborhood, they're, they, they both, they live and, and work in Carlsbad, Oceanside. So it's kind of like they're coming with a really kind of a, I liked that when I met with them, that they, they came in with a really sincere, sincere kind of like, um, take on this project. So I just wanted you guys to know that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Thank you. I think we're good for the moment. It is a public hearing, so, um, the audience is welcome to provide comment and/or, uh, an opinion. City Planner, any slips to speak on this item?
I'm gonna let Mary Sue read the, um, speaker slips for this, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, we do have three, uh, we'll go in this order. First will be Teal Sullivan, second will be Chad, is it Harn or Horn? And third will be Rob Howard. You each get three minutes.
Thank you. If you could bring the mic down to you, if that's easier, and give us your name, please?
I'm fine. Um, Teal Sullivan. I am a resident of South O since 2010, when, um, the current municipal taco building used to be Adventure 16. Um, my husband and I live just a few blocks up Vista Way from this current project and we like the project, we like all the improvements that are going on in Oceanside and South O. But, um, there's been some, there's been a lot of development. What, but what seems to us, there's not a lot of planning on what the impacts are to some of the people who live in the neighborhood. And, um, when we bought our home 10 years, or 12 years ago, um, Vista Way was not anywhere near as busy as it is now. And while we love having the amenities in the, the Oceanside and South O area to go to, we love going to, uh, Municipal Taco and, and, uh, LTH and all the different businesses that have opened up, it's brought a load of traffic onto our street. We don't have any stop signs, we don't have any traffic circles, we don't have any speed bumps, and it's literally become a raceway. It used to take me a couple of minutes to pull out of my driveway, it now takes us sometimes 10, 15 minutes. We've had two fatality accidents in that short stretch between, um, highway, uh, Interstate 5 and Coast Highway. We've had a police officer crash his car into one of our neighbor's front yards. We've had two or three, um, palm trees taken out of the center islands, numerous, um, uh, neighbors who've had their pets hit and killed. There's a traffic, I guess it would be a, I don't, it's not a traffic light, but you press a button and the yellow lights blink at Horn and Vista Way. I try to take my grandson down to the park. I press that button, no one adheres to it, they don't stop. And I see a project like this that I think is going to be great, it looks great. I, I don't see any of the iconic palm trees on the landscaping though, so hopefully those are not going. But, um, I, I think there needs to be some planning put in place for the residents. When Urge took over the Adventure 16 building, there wasn't any planning, you know, I think the parking is not going to be enough. Um, when Urge took over the building where Adventure 16 is, all of our neighbors were impacted with parking close to that business. They continue to be impacted by Municipal Taco. We're impacted, but there are people that park up and down Vista Way to walk down to those businesses. And I'm all for the progress, but we need some planning for the people who live in the area. Currently, if you want to go to, um, I can't think of the name of the cafe on the corner right across from the gas station there, um, you, you have to park on the street behind it, where the, the coffee place used to be. So if you could just put some plans in place for us, because as you add 18 units, one or two people each living in those units, that's at least two parking spaces in my eyes. 18 to 20 parking spaces are not going to be enough, and there needs to be a plan to so, slow traffic down on Vista Way.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chad Horn, um, and I've been a homeowner on California and Stewart and South Oceanside for about two years now. And I also work at a commercial real estate investment firm, um, up in Orange County, so I'm, you know, pretty close to this information and, um, well-versed in it. And so I just came to, uh, voice my support, uh, for the project for four different reasons. Um, one of them being, I think the current buildings that this project will replace are, you know, a bit of an eyesore, in my opinion. And, you know, just need to be replaced, given how they've been functionally obsolescent as the community has grown and evolved. And I think, you know, the current design is, you know, very aesthetically pleasing compared to what's currently there. This project also brings much-needed workforce housing to the community, um, along with, you know, new vibrant commercial space to replace the old. Um, and, you know, given this, that it's an apartment project, it's not going to add the, you know, short-term rental issue that many condo development, um, projects can, can result in. Uh, third, Fabric Investments, um, just has like an excellent and proven track record. Um, I think they're one of the most talented developers in North County, um, and they're also super intertwined in the community, they live here, um, and really think that this is a developer that we should be embracing, um, rather than, you know, having some large corporation come in, um, and, you know, do some project that the community is not, you know, hasn't had any input on or hasn't had any say in. Um, and I think to speak to one of their recent projects, they had the Tremont Collective, um, that they delivered on Minnesota and Tremont, uh, it's been highly successful. If you haven't tried the Poki Shoots Fish and Beer, I would recommend you do so. Um, and then, lastly, I think just having 18 new residents, uh, means a stronger local economy, as well as, uh, you know, stronger environment for small businesses. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Commissioners, um, Chair and the Commissioners and Staff, Rob Howard, and I'm an Oceanside resident. I'm excited about what I think this is going to come out to be, and I just, a couple of questions I wanted to ask. One, when you're doing the development, if you're actually going to maintain ownership of the property? Because I think oftentimes you see the stuff happen, the developer will develop it, they'll sell it, and the promises are harder to keep when now you have another owner. So that's my first question. The other one is, housing as a whole, I'm back to, uh, your point about the planning. It seems like we have our arena numbers, we have our general plan, we have our housing element, and it's not, I'm not saying it, it's not, but it doesn't appear that these plans are more than just plans, that we have an implementation process on how we're going to get there. But as an example, um, the density bonus seems pretty simple, but are we working to say, well, if we're going to give the density bonus, can we now have more low, moderate-income housing as a part of providing that density bonus to increase the housing that we have? That will allow us to also help and assist with the fact that we have created a service economy downtown, but yet they're not going to make enough to be able to live down there. And so without having a transportation plan and other things all coming together, what we're doing is we're asking people to come down there in cars that are probably older, um, higher greenhouse gas emission vehicles. So it's not fitting where we want to go with our climate plan. So, so those are the things I'm asking for. I, I can appreciate that, because yeah, a lot of the older buildings really do, it would be nice to see something happen with them. So, um, those are my questions about it. And approaching you with the planning commission, if, if we can look through a lens of all the plans we have that you're technically, or that are in front of you as we're approving these plans, that we put them all together with a lens of how do we make Oceanside successful with the plans that we have, particularly around the housing issues, around our transportation issues, and literally our climate issues, all three coming together for that same process? Thank you so much, I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to the project.
Thank you, sir. Is that it for our slips? If you did not submit a slip, that's okay, you can still come forward and address the commission before we close the public hearing. It should be like, it was your name, if you would, please?
My name's Kathy Durham, and I'm a resident on Freeman, South Freeman Street. I live adjacent to what used to be the Urge Brewery. I live adjacent to what used to be the Urge Brewery. Now it's the taco place. I'm very sensitive to parking for residents, and I wanted to know what the plans were for parking for the commercial aspect of this development. Was that, did you talk about that in the presentation?
It was addressed in the presentation, but we can touch on it in our comments here.
Okay, that'd be great. That's all I wanted to say. I support the first speaker's comments. We lived through a pretty difficult couple of years with Urge, not able to park in front of our homes because of a commercial business coming in where there was not adequate parking. And I just, that's my comment. I'm all for the development. I think it's great, but just sooner or later, I think there has to be more attention paid toward the constraints with the parking and the residents facing that problem.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else before we close the public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. So thank you, speakers, for highlighting, at least to the speakers, I think, very good points, and that is, how does this project impact the existing community? And then how does it play into development that isn't even here yet? And we've seen a number of developments on South Coast Highway, and again, more will come. So the point that was made is, how does a city address sort of the holistic impacts to a community? Parking, traffic, noise, et cetera. Very good points. And so I'll turn that into a question for staff, because I know it's a difficult one, and I don't think the planning space contemplates often a very holistic approach. They look at them more so in a very smaller footprint. But again, I'll turn it into a question. City Planner, help walk us through kind of your thoughts on the concept or the idea of, again, we're seeing development along that entire corridor. It is going to have impacts to the community. How that plays into the general plan and the elements of the general plan, circulation, et cetera? Maybe as best as you can, touch on how that process works and where that might lead us to.
Thank you for that. Then some question Chairman Rizales. It's not an easy one to respond to. Let me back up a little bit to give a little history of specifically South O in relation to the Coast Highway Vision Plan and the subsequent Coast Highway Incentive District and the Corridor Study. So South O basically opted out. The City Council chose to opt South O out of any of the Coast Highway Incentive District and those provisions that would have counted for growth in a certain way. The Coast Highway Incentive District stops at Moore Street. Everything's south, it's just business as usual under the current C2 zoning, under the city's zoning ordinance. With respect to impacts related to growth, those are challenges that the city faces. There's no one easy answer. The state law has provisions that we have to follow. This project is taking advantage of one of those laws, where they can request the reduction in parking under the auspice of a concession, and it's based on a financial constraint that that providing code-compliant parking would create for the project, would be a non-feasible project if they had to provide structured parking underground. There are, in general, there are ample parking spaces available on the street. It's not necessarily convenient parking to the project, perhaps, but it's parking that is available, that's available to anyone. It is unfortunate that it does have impacts on the community. There are, sometimes if a resident would like to park in front of their home, that space may not be available because it's filled by someone perhaps visiting a local shop. The best opportunity right now for the South O community to express their concerns would be through the current general plan update. Among the number of things that's occurring with the general plan update are specific neighborhood planning area, sections of the land use element will essentially be the land use element where some of these concerns perhaps could be addressed. So I would recommend that concerned citizens reach out to my colleague Russ Cunningham and express concerns that they have about the future of South O. I'm not sure if I answered your question, but that's generally where we're at today on how we can account for some of these impacts that some growth has on the local community. Vista Way unfortunately is an access ramp to the freeway, and that inherently brings more traffic than if it was just a local street. So those are all things that are in play that are leading to the current conditions that exist today in South O and specifically along Vista Way.
Yeah, no, that's a good start. Correct me if I'm wrong, but on the general plan update, as we tackle each of those elements that's going to be coming to us over the next several months, that'll be a snapshot in time where we can chew on the different things that ultimately the City Council will adopt the new general plan. So once that toolbox is set aside and it's in place, what does a resident in the South O Oceanside area have as other tools to be able to influence or leverage the issues that are still going to be there? The parking, the traffic, and so forth?
Sure. So just to clarify, the general plan is going to result in more work for the city and the staff. There will include a number of goals and implementation policies that we need to implement, and there will be a work program associated with it. So if I was living in South O and I've felt the growth pressures of new development, I would advocate for potentially specific design guidelines for South O, perhaps. Maybe something that's less intensive, the projects we've experienced recently, like at 1602 South Coast Highway or this particular project. There's things that we can put in place, but then there's laws that would allow a developer to supersede what plans we have in place. And the two projects that we've seen most recently in South O happen to take advantage of those opportunities available to them through state density bonus law.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't want to put words in what I've heard in this meeting and other meetings about the developments happening along Coast Highway and South Oceanside. I think there's a general consensus that it's good. It's an improvement to some degree over what's there currently. I just think that, being said, residents still want to have a voice, some influence to be able to say, it's coming, it's going to happen, but what course do I have if I'm an owner in that area to be able to say, you've heard me, and I'm going to have a say in the parking element or traffic and so forth? So I plan on continuing to raise this, because again, we're going to continue to see projects in that area, and I know we'll have other voices that are concerned, as were some of our speakers. I'll stop there. I know we have some other Commissioners who want to weigh in. Commissioner Hayes?
Thanks. So Sergio, I was wondering if, for example, when you mentioned possible goals or objectives that they could include for this neighborhood, since it was outside of the other part of the planning area, maybe South O needs something like a parking district, where that could be one of the policy moves or Vision Zero study to look at additional measures for calming traffic? Would those be appropriate measures?
Those could be, Commissioner Hayes, those could be appropriate measures. It would start with the community voicing those concerns to my colleague Russ Cunningham. And I know he's reached out to the South O community, and as I understand it, there hasn't been a lot of feedback provided to them on the potential neighborhood planning area, specific goals and objectives. So that would be a great start. And this is the best opportunity right now to do that, is in that we're in the midst of this general plan update, where specific neighborhood concerns are going to be addressed in the form of goals and policies, and specific to each of these neighborhood planning areas within the city.
Commissioner Obama, I see your lights lit up.
Yeah, I had two, actually. One was kind of maybe towards the applicant. I know that one of our speakers from the audience asked, I thought was a good question, Mr. Howard, about are you going to maintain ownership of this project? Are you going to sell it to somebody else? Like, I think that from what I met with you, you were going to maintain ownership, but I don't want to speak to that. Is that true?
Our platform is build and hold. You know, obviously, I couldn't stake my life on the fact that we will build and hold every single thing that we do, but that's always the intent. And I think with the intent being there, it drives a lot of decisions on the front end, which is being conscientious, listening to people's feedback, not skimping on the build, the design. We design and program it as if we will hold it forever. Most likely, we will, but I think also the intent is also very important, which is that is the intent.
Great. Thank you. The other question I was going to, or actually a statement I was going to make as far as ideas for parking. I know Freeman Street, my girlfriend lives on Freeman Street, and she really tells me about all the problems that they have with the parking. She has a, I don't know if you've been on, you can recall Freeman Street. It's a very large front yards. They have very, the houses are set back, there's a very large front yard. And in her case, of course, she's taken her garage and she's made it into a, you know, she's not parking in her garage. But they do have the ability to put curb, I was just wondering for the city staff, can you put curb cuts in and allow people on Freeman Street to put in, like, say, a two-car parking place, or actually you could stack four cars, because it's such a huge front lawn? Is that something hard that, say, a neighbor might want to do if they wanted to have parking for themselves? Have a curb cut put on their street and in front of their house and have a way to have more parking for themselves?
Commissioner Obama, under our current zoning ordinance in Article 31, which relates to parking and loading, each residence is only allowed to have one curb cut. And specifically, they're only allowed to have one curb cut, and if your home is served by an alley, then access, if you're doing any sort of remodel to your home, access has to be off the alley. So that's under the current regulatory framework that we have in place, so that wouldn't be possible. I suppose my idea could be floated to amend the ordinance to allow multiple curb cuts, but that leads to other issues inherent with allowing multiple curb cuts in tight, close neighborhoods like this.
Very good. Any other Commissioners? Okay, then I will entertain whatever the desire is of the rest of Commissioners, if somebody wants to make a motion or...
Motion to, that we pass the project. A motion to approve and confirm issuance of a categorical exemption for per sequoia guidelines, Article 19, Section 15, 332, infill development projects, and approved development plan D 21 00012 coastal development permit RC 21 00009 and density bonus DB 21 0006 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 2022 P 09 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Custer. Second?
I was going to offer a second, but I'd also like to make a comment, that I think the design of this project is exceptional. I mean, as an architect, I just, the first time I looked at it was like, this is not like your usual density bonus kind of a project that comes along. Like, we've had a few that we've seen, and this one actually was like the poster child of what we could actually use for our, if we did come up with design standards, getting these guys to be part of the committee. Because it's really a good project. And the way they use their masonry block in the first level is like cutting-edge. I mean, I think it's great. It's like the kind of joints where you have concrete blocks and you squish out the mortar, so it gives you a little bit more of a detail. That's what they're proposing in their elevation. So it's just really, really well-thought of, and I really thought those guys did a great job, and they're very sincere in how they approached their design, so thank you for that. So the other is like having 18 apartments, I think, is right on also. It's not a condo project, it's not a for-sale project. It's going to offer first-time, younger people to be able to come into Oceanside and be able to rent an apartment. And there will be two affordable ones, but also it's going to be even better for those that can afford the market rate. So I think this is a great project for Oceanside and South O. I'm sure all the businesses are going to be happy. I've talked to several already that asked them what they felt about this, and they all supported it. So everyone's concerned about traffic and parking, though. That's just the number-one thing on everybody's head. It's something that everybody has to work for in South O, and we thought we had it with our Coast Highway Vision Plan, but maybe there's more that we can talk about with that area to come up with some other kind of traffic calming, because she's right about Vista Way. It's a hard street. So, anyway.
In all of that, I heard a motion or a second?
I seconded right in the beginning. I seconded right in the beginning. I had to go on with my little soapbox.
Yeah, and I'll add a comment before we vote, that thank you again, speakers, for providing the thought and the articulation for your concerns about the impacts on the neighborhood. So I would encourage you to stay engaged over the next several months as we tackle the general plan. It'll come to this body and then ultimately City Council for approval as your first level for engagement on the issues you've raised. And then down the road, other opportunities to engage your councilperson and others to look for good ideas and solutions that will hopefully alleviate what you addressed this evening, parking and traffic and so forth. So stay engaged. We appreciate your comments. With that, let's go ahead and vote.
Chairman Rizales, let the record show that seven in favor of the project.
Thank you. Okay, we will then move to discussion items. The first item for discussion is, as City Planner indicated, Item 5 is going to be continued until May 23rd. That would be the general plan update phase two, project alternatives. So that's again, May 23rd. So Item 6 under the agenda is nomination for the Downtown Advisory Committee representative. This nomination would, nominee would finish the term through July of 2023. So discussion and nomination by anybody on the Commission that would like to nominate somebody for that advisory committee. Before we do that, City Planner, if you could tell us what this nominee would be taking on in terms of being that representative? What kind of frequency and issues, et cetera?
Chairman Rizales, I'll take this question, because I had the DAC meetings currently. We have DAC meetings quarterly through the year now. We have nine committee members, so filling this seat would be filling of Jolene Hayes' seat. But yeah, we are in need of one member from the Planning Commission, so.
And the typical issues that the DAC takes on?
I'm sorry. And the typical issues, all the projects within the downtown district, basically spanning from Wisconsin all the way up to kind of close to the borders there of the harbor, and they span all the way almost to Freeman Street here, and then to the coast. So primarily, most of the downtown is within the coastal zone. So a majority of the items that go forward to Downtown Advisory are within coastal matters. A lot of those are either commercial-based within our downtown area. We have a lot of coastal permits for room additions and new housing, multifamily housing, and even some density bonus projects. But then also some large mixed-use projects, because we have, we still have some areas within our nine-block master plan that still need to be implemented within those areas there. But yeah, that's primarily most of the items that you'd be reviewing, as well as CUP reviews, updates to the zoning ordinance, and LCPA amendments as well.
And Chair Rizales, it's important to note that the Downtown Advisory Committee doesn't make a decision on any project, but rather they advise the City Council, sitting as the Community Development Commission, on projects, as Scott mentioned, in the downtown district.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, I'm looking for somebody to make a nomination.
Well, I just was going to add to some of that. I served on that for several years, and it's a really, it's a really great group of people, and you do get to review a lot of the interesting projects in the city, in the downtown area. But I would hope that, I'm not sure where everybody lives, but someone that has an interest, like I think Tom over here, you have like a house on Pacific Street. You might want to maybe kind of have some, like, at least know what's going on. I mean, I think that you might have an interest. I'm not sure the rest of you. I personally don't have the time, but I would nominate Tom if he wanted to do that job, but I'm not sure where all of you guys live. If you even have an interest.
Okay. Tom, you've been suggested as a nominee. Okay, Tom, you've been suggested as a nominee.
Does anybody else want to do it? I don't know.
New commissioners, I don't know if you'd like to jump in the fray and serve on this other committee?
It's fun. It's a good committee.
Kevin, Jeff?
Well, I'm still trying to get my feet planted here, so I don't really have that bandwidth quite yet.
Okay, fair enough. Jeff?
I would be willing to do it. It'd be an opportunity to learn, so.
Yeah, you're a paddler too. You're actually on the ocean a lot, right? So, you're down there.
Then a lot of time on the ocean, yeah, I do.
Get off the paddle boat and then jump into a meeting, so. Okay, so.
It's just important to note that the date and times of those meetings are typically in the morning and at 9:00 AM on the quarterly date that the meeting falls. Is it typically a Tuesday or Wednesday? They're typically on Wednesday.
So, Wednesdays at 9:00, once a quarter?
In this council chambers here.
Okay, if that.
I could swing it. Yeah, there might be conflicts with my job.
I'd be happy to do it too, so.
So, Tom's, okay. And you said you might have conflicts?
I mean, I would have, I have work, so I have conflicts there with my paying clients at work.
Okay, well, we have a nomination for Tom. Jeff's expressed some interest. Let's do a vote for, we'll just do it by hand. Vice Chair Morrissey has been nominated for the Downtown Advisory Committee. Raise your hands that would support that?
Uh-oh.
Okay, that was easy. So, you have a commissioner that is willing to serve on that advisory committee.
Be good for it. You'll like it.
Thank you, Chairman Rosales. We will pass along the Planning Commission's recommendation to the city council, who makes the final appointment.
Great, thank you. That brings us to the next item. Item 7 is also being continued. That's a capital improvement program budget general plan for fiscal year 2223. That's going to be continued until May 9th. That brings us to last item on the agenda, and that's Commissioner Reports. I'll start. I had a question for City Planner as my report. So, when we adopted, when the city council adopted the short-term rentals ordinance, when I served on that ad hoc committee, one of the recommendations that we made was, because there were a number of items that we were going to be learning how well we did in crafting that ordinance, so I made a suggestion that we'd see some metrics and some data back after the ordinance had been adopted about a year afterwards. And I know it's been probably more than a year, so if I could ask if maybe we could find an opportunity in the next couple of months to bring back some information on how that ordinance is going. And I don't recall exactly what metrics we were going to look at, but maybe you can pull out some of the old information and do a short presentation to this body, like I said, in a couple of months or so.
Chairman Rosales, that's certainly something we can do. I know, I'm not intimately familiar with all the intricacies of the short-term rental ordinance, but I do know that I believe we, our staff member, Shannon Vitale, who kind of spearheaded the ordinance creation.
Right, Shannon was key to that, exactly.
She, I believe, provides a yearly report to the city council, so we certainly could have her come in and give an update of where we've been since the ordinance was adopted and how things have progressed along.
Great, perfect, thank you. Vice Chair Morrissey, any reports?
We, two weeks ago, we brought up something regarding a planting situation, and I just, I happened to see the homeowner today and said something convenient. I said, "Well, two weeks is not a lot of time for us to probably have a report back, but I just want to let you know that it did come up today."
I will, I'll follow up if I could enforce on that, Vice Chair Morrissey.
You know, could you send me the person that is tasked with that, taking care of that area of the, I don't know what you call that, the open space where the landscaping is at Rancho Del Oro?
Sure, I could put you in contact with, there's a person in Public Works who generally does all the tree trimming, and we could put you in contact with that person.
Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Sure.
Commissioner Obama?
I have nothing to report, but I have a question for staff on the process of the appeal process for a project, like, say, such as this one that we just had. What does it cost, like, say, if a neighbor wanted to appeal this project? And what is, you know, just kind of, can you just kind of give me a little bit of an idea of what that is?
Commissioner Obama, we're quite experienced with appeals, of planning commission decisions to the city council. So, the appeal process is outlined in Article 46 of the zoning ordinance. There's a couple of ways that a project can be appealed. Actually, there's three ways. One way is if it gets called for review by city council. It just takes two members of the city council to call a project up. We haven't had one of those in a while. Another way is for an applicant to appeal a decision of the Planning Commission. Maybe it's not favorable decision to them. They pay a fee, it's about $1,800, and they pay a fee, and they can appeal that decision to the city council. And then the third opportunity to appeal is by members of the public. Typically, it's folks on the project notification list. So, in the instance of this project, we, anyone who owns property within 1,500 feet or anyone who lives, an occupant who lives within 100 feet, and there's two ways they can do it. They could pay the same $1,800 plus or minus fee and submit that appeal to the city clerk's office, or they can gather signatures on, from 25 people, 50% of people on the project notification list, or 25, whichever is less. And typically, that's the appeal process that we experience. It's typically neighbors who appeal projects where they don't have to pay a fee, it just got, it takes them to get banned together and fill out a, sign a petition, and then we receive a letter that outlines the points of their appeal. And those are the points that get responded to by staff to city council, and staff makes a recommendation to city council on those appeal points.
The reason I'm asking that was because I was hoping that whatever amount of money or fee that was charged is going to compensate our staff time in reviewing all this. And it sounds like the 25 signature thing doesn't do anything for the staff time and the amount of work that it takes to do this. So, we're actually losing money on this kind of idea as we're, you know, because it seems like we get a lot of these appeals that are probably the 25 people, and it burdens like projects that might be a good project because of somebody's, whatever they don't like about it, and they can just get 25 neighbors together and do it, and it doesn't cost them anything, but it costs our city a lot of money. I just think we need to think about this. At least it should be something where at least compensates the city staff time on what they spend to process this. It shouldn't be a free thing.
Yeah, so Commissioner Obama, actually, staff time is charged. Unfortunately, the developer or the applicant pays the burden of that cost, so that we charge, they enter into an agreement with the city that all the time necessary to process their application gets charged to what we call a developer deposit account. And then, so even an appeal, our time gets charged to them. So, they, it's pretty punitive to an applicant when the project gets appealed.
They're already paying for probably their construction loan, like, you know, they've got to pay a lot of just money right there, let alone pay for the appeal process. I don't know. I guess that's more of a city council thing, not a planning commission issue, but I kind of think I'm going to talk to a couple of my city council members.
Yeah, no, that would, it sounds like a city ordinance that would need to be reviewed and considered. Commissioner Custer?
Nothing to report.
Hayes?
I have one thing, and especially for the new commissioners. So, this year, the National American Planning Association meeting is in San Diego, and commissioners do get special discounts, so I think it's, I think it's $100 a year to be a member if you're a planning commissioner, which is, believe me, cheap. I don't qualify, even though I'm a planning commissioner, because I'm AICP. But there's a lot of good information that's going to be at the conference. So, it's April 30th to May 3rd in person, or there's going to be an online version from May 18th to the 20th, and I'm assuming there's going to be some of those modules on affordable housing. You may be able to ask some of the questions that we're all grappling with up here.
Thank you for that information. Commissioner Dodds?
I don't have a report, but I do have a question. The previous meeting, we discussed the opportunity of creating small group meetings to discuss Southmore Hills project. I didn't hear anything about any scheduled meetings. Are there anything that's going to be coming up?
Commissioner Dodds, the way that was intended to work, and we did hold one of those meetings, is that if you're interested in learning more about the Southmore Hills plan, then you would contact Rob Di Mahouski, our senior planner, who's leading the creation of the Southmore Hills plan, and we will schedule some time with you to bring you up to speed and answer any questions that you might have at your convenience.
Okay, my apologies. I misunderstood. I'll be contacting you.
Sure, thank you.
And Commissioner Simons?
Nothing to report.
City Planner?
Thank you, Chairman Rosales. Just to bring you up to date on a couple of things that will be coming before you. On May 9th, you will get an update on the Brother Benno's project to see where they stand since you last considered that project. At the next meeting, you'll also hear the CIP capital improvement budget. On the meeting of the May 23rd, we have the alternatives report is coming back to this body. More work has been required than we initially anticipated from when you first considered it in March, and we hope to have that alternatives updated report to you soon and an explanation for your consideration and recommendation to city council. You'll also be considering a development plan and a conditional use permit for a psychiatric hospital at the Tri-City campus and a regular coastal permit at 1229 South Pacific Street. And then on June 13th, we have scheduled for your consideration a general plan amendment, zone amendment, plan block development overlay adoption for a piece of, for a project known as Tierra Norte on the south side of North River Road. So, north of the river, south of North River Road, currently zoned industrial, and they're coming forward with a rezone to medium-density residential. And there are, moving forward, we're just speaking about appeals. The appeals that resulted from the meeting of March 14th have been scheduled for the city council. On May 4th, the appeal of the Chem Station CUP will be considered by the city council in addition to a project you recently considered at Mission and Douglas. It's a general plan amendment, zone change to be able to parcelize off an existing gas station from a mobile home park. And then on June 22nd, there will be the appeal of the Whaley Street project and Cypress Point project will be considered by city council in addition to the alternatives report. That's all for the City Planner's update.
Great, appreciate that update. With that, we stand adjourned until May 9th. Thank you.